All right, I'd like to call the August 18th, 2021 Select Board Regular Meeting to order. The time is 6:32. We'll take a look at the agenda. Review any changes to the agenda if any? I would like to request that if we have any Zoom visitors or in-person visitors, that the agenda item that they came to will be moved further up in the evening from where they might originally be. Okay, so we have Daniel and Mr. Statts here. All right, so any other changes to the agenda besides what I just requested for unscheduled, scheduled members of the public? You done later on?
What was the other name that you pronounced? Was that Tom somebody?
Tom Statts, S.T.A.A.T.S. And Daniel
Thank you.
All right, right now, we're going to go to review approved minutes from the August 1st, excuse me, August 4th, 2021 regular meeting. All right, so I have the draft minutes from August 4th in front of me. Does anyone have any changes on page one of five?
I have just one thing.
David?
Peter, down under the roads, the flood, flash flood damage report, the ones who, third paragraph, Mr. Bills had spoken with Mark Pickering. Just Mark spells his name, M.A.R.C., not M.A.R. So if you could just change that to M.A.R.C., that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to page two of five. Any changes on page two or five?
Yes.
Standing, standing on item?
Yes, under bid for material repainting discussion slash vote. In the first line, page, middle of the sentence. The, the name of Michael is S, the last name is S is in Sam, P is in Thomas, A is an apple, A is an apple, T is in Thomas, S is in Stanmer and not P.L.A.A.T.F. or whatever that is.
Thank you.
Right, so that name's got a correction. Anything on page one or two? Maybe we're on page two right now.
Let's see, let's see if we got here. Where's the powder course needles?
High horse needles, chemical application discussion.
There's, there's second paragraph, capital T, should've been small T. It's all small stuff.
Rick, the table in the matter.
Yeah, we got that as a large T too. There was a couple of capital T. Yeah, this manager suggested table as an attitude in this book.
Anything else on page two?
Yep, thorough vacuuming.
Thorough vacuuming, the match, do you have?
Should be thorough, should be thoroughly spelled wrong.
Oh, it's done.
Thorough from the bottom. And the item was tabled, down further, capital T, but it's not small T.
Where was?
Down towards bottom. Says, it says the item was tabled.
The next, the last section on page two.
Mr. Nogby discussed it from fourth floor.
Excuse me, is tabled supposed to be capitalized or not?
Say again?
Did you want tabled capitalized or not?
Not.
Not.
Yeah, it's not really a big deal.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
No greetings.
Page three of five. Any changes on page three or five?
Under dog license, the second category. I, should after email be a period or a forward slash?
Dog license, email last sent.
Email dog license.
Mr. Kanzer, what do you want the list, what do you want?
Well, it says, Mr. Kanzer reported some responses to the dog license.
Email.
Email. And there's, and there's a forward slash after L.
Okay.
So just, just in here, just a.
Just add punctuation. Anything else on page three or five? Page three or five? And page four or five? None, move on to page five or five. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from Wednesday, August 4th, 2021 as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan Noga. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from Wednesday, August 4th, 2021 as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The draft minutes have been approved as amended. All right, next slide is review and approve the minutes from the August 10th, 2021 Emergency Meeting. One page of minutes. Does anybody have any editing or any changes to the minutes, the draft minutes from Tuesday, August 10th, 2021?
The only thing I noticed is that I, I think under the, and you could just, you could add it probably under the third part about going into, we should note the time that we went into executive session and the time that we exited executive session. I think that's a requirement of the minutes, so.
I don't have my notes here. I probably should. Oh, wait, wait, 6:40, 6:41. I have it on, on my sheet here on the other side. All right, we get into executive minutes. We go ahead at 6:41 PM.
Let me keep all that.
And we came out. Don't have the time exactly that we came out. It was the meeting ended at 8:33. I came out something around the end, right? Wasn't, wasn't very late.
This is the first one?
The first one.
We don't know. Anyway, when was the 6:40?
We started at 6:41.
It was at least an hour.
7:41, hour.
I want to think those, I can have it, but it's an hour within.
We ended the meeting at 8:35.
I would say it was more like pretty close. Yeah, it was more like 10 to 8 or something like that. I remember it being over an hour. Mark spoke for almost an hour and then we were in. Yep. I don't remember the exact time, but I remember it being something like an hour and forty minutes.
And then we spoke after we dismissed. That's right.
It did take us like an hour. And you said 8:35, we closed that?
We closed at 8:35.
I would say an hour and a half total in executive sessions, I guess.
So.
10:35.
That's what I thought. That's what I said, about 10:35. All right, so I will add that the executive session ended at approximately 8:10.
And the other thing is you should record that the vote was unanimous to enter into the executive session. I, I think we have to have that recorded also.
Oh, that the motion that we went into executive session.
You have that it's mo, that it was moved and seconded, but not that it was.
All right.
Or whatever.
Perfect, I'll fix that on the, on the minutes when I retype it. Anything else for the minutes from August 10th? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 10th, 2021 as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
We seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the emergency meeting on August 10th, 2021 as amended, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed, the minutes have been, the minutes have been accepted as amended. Right, next one. Review and approve minutes from the August 12th, 2021 Special Meeting. All right. Are there any changes or amendments to this draft minutes from Thursday, August 12th? I know one.
Well, we just, yeah, I would just have the same things that we need to record, that there was a vote and that it was unanimous and the time we went in and came out, exactly.
All right, so we pretty much called the meeting to order. We had no changes and we went into executive session. I'm guessing it would probably be, well, same time, I would say 6:40. I'm going to say that we entered into executive session at 6:40 PM and that we exited executive session. This was a fairly thorough meeting. I don't, do you remember the time you left?
I, I had written it down on a piece of paper, but I don't have that piece of paper there.
No, I don't either. If you will allow me, I will go back to the video and double check the exit time and amend that to the time based upon the videotaping. I apologize for not having that right now. And I'll also add about the vote.
So you can redo it next, on the first.
All right, how about, how about we table approving this draft minutes until it's been edited correctly? Because I don't have the time on it. So I said next meeting, we will, we will, I'm going to table this. Is that all right, can you, David?
Sure, yeah, that's fine. Whatever's easiest.
All right, scheduled members of the public. I'd like to welcome Daniel. Daniel, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, hello, everyone.
Hi, Daniel.
Hello.
Daniel is a new member, a new resident here in Brookline. He lives down on Percher Road and he has met with both Tom Cabat and myself. And he has an interest in joining our planning board for the upcoming year. Tom had expressed that he is going to find, that he's finding it difficult to, with some family concerns, to do all the work that may be coming up for the next planning session for committee. So we recruit Daniel and he seems quite interested in doing it. And so we're going to need further feedback. But Daniel, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself or briefly? So you can introduce, this is Stan Noga, when we're here and Bruce Mella here. Of course, myself, not my actual point, Tanzel wouldn't make this evening. She has family commitment. But why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Yeah, good, good to virtually meet you all. Hopefully, we can do it in person soon. I moved here to Brookline in October of last year. Came here from Chicago where I'd lived for five years. And before that, I, I moved to the States from, from Denmark. So from, from Europe originally, but yeah, moved up. I'm at 78 Parker Road. And work up here in my, my office remotely. I work at a software company in, in marketing. So, yeah, and excited to, to join and hopefully contribute and, and start working with you all.
Well, such appreciated. We were going to talk about, talk about it later on in the meeting on the Select Board Chair Report, but welcome to start now so you can get back to your lovely wife and beautiful daughter. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint, Daniel, how do you say your last name? Conounce it.
It would be Klipko in Danish, Klitgaard is what I. I'm flexible, I know it's a tough one.
Okay, so Daniel, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Daniel Klitgaard to our planning commission for the town of Brookline. May I have a second on that appointment?
Second.
Seconded, seconded by Bruce Mella. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of, of appointing Daniel Klitgaard to the planning commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I would like to welcome you to the community known as the Brookline Volitioners for the planning commission here in town. We, we will be working with you as time goes on. And I believe Tom is going to set up a committee meeting still to talk about the different, different aspects and what we'd be doing what in the, in the planning for the town of Brookline's next report. So Daniel, thank you very much. You're welcome, you're welcome to stay on if you'd like or you may again join your family, but appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel, for being willing to join the committee.
Happy to.
All right, we will move on to moving up on the agenda. As I mentioned at the beginning, if we had unscheduled, scheduled members that showed up, we would move that item a little earlier in the meeting. So before we go and do anything else, we'll introduce, we have Sam Boer. And Sam Moore. Kerry Moore, M.E.R.R.Y. Y, R, R.
Yes.
M.E.R.R.Y. Moore, B.O.U.R.N.E. And as I mentioned before, Tom Statts is here and Mark Bills is also here this evening. That's what Peter's recording of the information. All right, gentlemen, who would like to speak first? Hi, Kerry.
I will. Kerry Moore. Yeah, I'm here to speak about the Round Schoolhouse. Round Schoolhouse is a very unique historic structure that there's only one in the world like it. And I would have liked the opportunity to work on it. I learned that the work they got done on it was $3,000 for one day's work. And having a, a daughter in college, I would relish that opportunity as well. I do historic preservation work I have for about three decades and I thought that was pretty well known. They don't advertise, but I never needed to. As far as being on some of my past commitments to the town, about five years ago, I rebuilt the Greer Bridge. And I believe I saved the town about $15,000 when I did that. Thirty-one years ago, I redesigned and built the town greater building. I believe I saved a significant amount of money on that as well. In the past, I'm on the Brookline Meeting House Committee and I have donated willingly a lot of my time and expertise on that. I have I logged 30 hours in the crawl space and being instrumental on the heavy timber repair, we jacked the steeple up. I was about that many hours as well. Implementing the balustrade rebuild. Spent the day on the lift, 65 feet in the air. Last summer's project was I hand dug the septic system at the meeting house and, and repaired it. Documented the existing conditions of the town. I know there's a list that the Select Board builds over or uses to hire people in town. And I think with those tasks behind me, I should have been on that list. But I'd like to be on it in the future.
Right. We, we did off, we, we, we have extended that to you though. Just something I got the paperwork done.
Right, but why, why am I not on it? I mean, I have.
You need to ensure.
Well, I, I provided a certificate of insurance when I did that job, the, the rear bridge replacement.
Okay, we found in our purchase policy that Judy Akkumbor, our Assistant Treasurer, pointed out to me this year that every year, the soul sore vendors need to be reappraised during the first meeting of August, first meeting of the fiscal year, so in July. So I started to put together that list and we, we did, I think, two updates to it. Here, July 7th, we did the approval of the first batch of it. And then on July 21st, we realized that we had others that were, should be approved again at our concern, our vendors. And Mr. Nova said we should have Kerry Moore on this list as well because of his contributions. And so I sent you out an email and we just have a vendor packet that needs to be kept on file. And there's a, I don't know if Mike Masters is still here, but he can give you that packet. It consists of a contract saying that you are an independent person. You're not in authority of the town. And it just says that you have insurance, we will be paying workhorse compensation. So it's a, something for the audit that has to be done. And it's, I guess it shouldn't be done on a more regular basis, but Judy pointed it out and so we have it this year. It's a vendor list, through vendors that can be pulled on that are already pre-approved and have demonstrated quality work in the town. And it's redone every year.
Should be done every year.
Should be done every year going forward, it will be. It's something that's, you know, on our horizon that she pointed out to us. But for what you, for what you were saying, I know we spent some time together talking. We do appreciate your effort. I understand, I think I explained to you that the meeting house or the historical committee. I'm going to make, well, I'll make this, I'll make this story short. When I came on board, the Select Board in 2014, I was aware of a $5,000 grant. People were talking about it here and there. I left the Select Board for two years and when I came back in March, sometime in April, I heard that $5,000 still hasn't been spent from the $25,000 grant that came from the Rock Preservation Society. And we started to ask the historical, please, if you're not going to do it, the Select Board is going to apply to the rest of that grant. When you can, when you, that we could do some more work here. We talked about electricity and other things. Mr. Wellman and Mr. Dutton and Cynthia were contacted and Mr. Dutton and, and Mr. Wellman met. And I guess it was in, in May, which I'm not sure. April, okay, they beta in April. In May, Stan Noga came aboard and we were not getting enough things going. It was very, very slow. We were concerned about the deadline of August 1st. So I asked Stan if he would take on getting this project going. So I came in March, Stan came in May, and by the end of July, we had that grant completed, which, which was a little bit rushed. And I, and I will admit that the committee did not do due diligence and provide two bids for that project. However, I don't want to say for the, the bridge, rear bridge. I, I apologize professionally to you and to anybody else that this may have affected. One of the things I am learning is that communication is very, very important. I have seen, I found everybody in this room dirty, sweaty, maybe injured and hungry. They've done volunteer work for the town. It's very much appreciated. No, no hard feelings, I hope going forward. I will be more, more transparent. I think things, we use listserv to say, hey, look, we're going to be putting out the sand bin or, or we're, we're going to be doing this or we're doing some work in the meeting house. We're doing some work in the round schoolhouse. I won't make that effort to be more transparent. And so if things like that sort of comes up, I hope it never happen again. I apologize for, for the Select Board and, and the fact that sometimes appointed committees don't really follow the letter of the law. But I was disappointed because they were too past Select Board members that should have known better and should have done a little bit more due diligence. And, but it falls back on me, so I would think that.
Well, I don't think you should take responsibility exclusively. But I've, I've got follow-up here. You know, undoing my volunteer work for the town, I neglected to charge or want to charge or offer my services professionally because of the worry of somebody crawling foul, reading into it that maybe my motives were financially driven. So anyway, I, I never did charge for materials and labor and expertise. I can't help but feel that the efforts that I have put forth, the values of my efforts have been lessened by this current procedure.
Inside that.
It's, that's the way I feel about it. And I will have to say that in the future, I'm, I'm happy to do tasks that need to be done, but I'm going to charge for it.
I appreciate that.
Should, yeah, I think it, it's been proven to me that it will be appreciated more and, and maybe I'll be remembered. So to follow this up, I would like to ask the permission of the Select Board to join this meeting house committee or Historical Preservation Committee that includes the Round Schoolhouse.
Say that again?
He wants to join the Historical Preservation Committee.
No, the Historic Commission.
Historic Commission, thanks.
Well, actually, I would like to talk about that because I think that, I think that we really need, I, I think it's odd in town that we have a historic present, historic commission. No, it's called Historic Society, or Historical Society. And the Brookline Meeting House Associate Group. And either one of them, both historical buildings, but I think you should have two individual ones. It's the Round Schoolhouse Committee and the Brookline Meeting House Committee. I would like to see them join, but.
Our, our committee was asked about a year ago, if we wanted to merge with the Round Schoolhouse. Our answer collaboratively was that we had plenty to do ourselves and that we didn't really want to take the Round Schoolhouse on. But however, when I see things like this happen and the inactive board that's there, I'd rather be part of the solution than the problem.
I, I, thank you very much for saying that. I will add to the agenda for further discussion at the next Select Board meeting. I actually might be suggesting that we disband the Historic Society and have a Round Schoolhouse committee so that I can reappoint it with people who are interested in working on it. And that's what I'd like the Select Board to consider.
Yes, sir. Would, if the opportunity came up to join the two, how do you feel about it? Would you rather not? Or can it, can there be like a subset of the larger group? Because it almost looks like the vote, the goal of each is to accomplish the same thing to areas or building. And, and I'm wondering if having to be concerned from the Select Board standpoint, committee here and committee there. I know we talked about this years ago when you and I were on this.
Were.
With the preservation of, the preservation of the church, the not meeting us. And, and at that point, it was an idea that, at the, with the people that are on it then, that might be a worthy possibility to do. But we felt uncomfortable because there was this $5,000 hanging on. But we felt uncomfortable because there was this $5,000 hanging on there. Nothing was happening. And we want to take that, that uh, we didn't want to offend the other people on that other group. We kept, thought we'd keep ourselves separate. And so that's what happened back four, five years ago. Uh, so I'm kind of curious, both of you for that now. What do you think about that?
Well, personally, I I think it will work out, but I need to go to our committee and see if they're willing to to take on more work. We're all trying to fit this stuff in. And
Just saying one thing.
What it may be an efficient way to deal with it.
One of the things that that I'm recognizing through this process of having two groups is that the meeting house committee has been on occasion applying through the Preservation Trust of Vermont for grants. And I think if I read the notes right, minutes, I'm sorry, properly, there was a grant that the meeting house group had asked for last October. And I could see where there might have been a Well, the minutes said preservation. Well, anyway, but what I'm thinking about is I wondered if in part the the fact that that one wasn't granted was in any manner, shape or form predicated on the fact that they were having a hard time getting rid of the last $5,000 and they weren't getting much response from the people that were responsible in our town to getting along with that. And so that was, I'm saying, could that happen? I don't know. But I'm wondering if it was the one group that was responsible all the way along the road. If if the the opportunity or the 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 thinking or the characterization that we're presenting as a town to that source of grant would be enhanced, that there were no problems, everybody's doing it the same way. Everybody knows what the rules are and 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 just proceeding in a unified manner. But I but I can understand the volunteer work. It's like a selectmen, like what you you do, you get in front of a lot of time. At times it feels like nobody appreciates it. Absolutely.
Okay, I I would like to say that of course, I would love to have you working on another committee if you had the time. I know I enjoy working with the Brooklyn Meeting House Committee people and there's not as much to do over at the Round Schoolhouse except some repairs to the shed work, which can be planned and there is some running in our camp for that at this time. But I would like to spend a little bit more time next next meeting to talk about it a little bit more thoroughly with and and reach out to the committee members and tell them what my idea is. I will send an email blast out to the residents to see, you know, who wants to get involved. I sent an email out for a request for a let drive back for the meeting house last night. I think people volunteered to either contribute or buy one or and I was just very moved by the people wanting to get involved. So I'm gonna try that outreach more and I welcome you on that committee or another committee here and now. Next, I'll get it on my agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you, Doc.
Did you, did you include the the roof, the meeting house as part of what you've done in the past? Because for your concrete, will you appreciate that when you finish?
Well, I didn't want to get overly particular in what I've done. There's a lot of people in town who do a lot of things, but yes, that. I also put a bridge cap on the round schoolhouse building stopped last year and screwed roofing down and it then ripped back by a storm.
Yeah.
My interests are in sincerely historic preservation. So I can't help myself but to show some responsibility for things.
Much appreciated. And I I hope you know that I we did hear you and respect what you had to say.
Were we close to be on that list?
Yes.
There are a couple of points I want to make. First of all, I want to go back to February, I believe 15. When we say this town had a huge amount of money.
Yep.
I believe the quotes we had at time, I'm not gonna name names. But let me, let me back up for a second. Myself, Mark Phillips, Archie Clark, we did that, we did rear bridge quite thoroughly. I was new on the board at that point. I was a rookie. And when we got done and analyzed our, then you and I worked pretty closely about encouraging your your bid and the ideas that you had, and it worked out famously. That I believe, I believe the bill was $6,200 or $6,500 if I remember correctly. We had, we had quotes in excess of $30,000.
$30,000 exactly.
I know one, I know one person who's not with us anymore. It's over $30,000. And another person is very confident, town has experience, thought we should put all this concrete and everything. And you did it for a nominal price and I live with the opinion that that thing is gonna last, sorry, bridge, for 100 years. Saying that, I want to fast forward to something else. I've been on a mission for the last two years to work on these buildings. Once done, praise God. And we're moving on to the others. We've been working on it since spring. So like Doc says, if we neglected to notify, we certainly apologize. Your your help and what you've done in the past has been invaluable. So it wasn't because we were ignoring that. Like, they said, or being repetitive, they just want to drive it home. But we were a little bit under the gun to get that 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 money done to get everything satisfied over this place. That's not an excuse, that's just an act.
Terrible excuse. What part of terrible excuse, my eyes?
I'm sorry for that. I apologize. I think so, and I just want to make one of the points. We, Stan and I have been working pretty closely. So we've been working on this building and we've been working on the round schoolhouse. So we're looking at trying to tie things up and get things, something capable. The round schoolhouse is just clean. The round schoolhouse was, with the lack of a better word, was off. But if you look in there now, it looks dramatically different. So we've been working very hard in here, in there, over above this school, which is now done. And trying to do a nice job to to make these buildings, or to stuff with, in my mind, being on the board of state years now, seriously neglected, especially the school. That's a whole other issue, but I've been up there.
All right, Kerry.
I'm finished.
Mr. Statts, how can we help you with this evening?
Well, I'm kind of repeating Kerry's thing. But I just wanted to, in case, now people know my name, you know, Stan knows me, you know me, you know me. But in case somebody doesn't know me, you know, I've lived in town for 40 years. I, I did Greenup Day, I initiated Greenup Day in this town, brought it back into town originally before Joyce's group took it over. I was on the Brooklyn School Board for two years, on two terms, both times as the chair. I was on the select board for two terms, chair. I was on the road commissioner for two terms. I filed for grants and brought in over $300,000 worth of grants in this town. My truck drives back and forth with new paint painted on it, two trucks in town. You know, and the fact that the work that was done on that round schoolhouse in 2009, I have a folder here that I have a photo journal of everything that was done in that building that I did. I put those stone steps on. I took that beam out that was rotten. I brought the wall, the rocks down from my house to build that stone wall there. I, Mark Phillips cut me that beam, we got that beam from his mill. And the grate went on the inside. It's it's just really disheartening that living in town, you're saying you're trying to get volunteers, you're trying to get people. Well, you had volunteers. You had somebody that's done this all for nothing my whole life in this town. I feel so put out by you guys. I don't, I wouldn't, you know, I feel like I live in Brooklyn, my Brooklyn now is my house, you know? I'm a taxpayer. I've done so much in this town and you couldn't even think that that Newtane Painters would be interested in that. You didn't even, you didn't follow the three, you're supposed to have three estimates. Two estimates. Well, it's a different policy than I guess in one, when I was here.
It's over the amount.
It's just based on the amount.
Over $1,000, we have three estimates here. Okay, and you've got two estimates for that?
We don't do the estimates. That's what I was saying.
Well, where are the minutes of that? They're they're an elected body. They're supposed to have minutes for their meeting.
They they are there, but they are.
The bid is on the website.
You look at all these dentures here. I I dug that that woodshed out by hand. I took, I brought my back, um, put drainage around it and drained out the rope. I took the wood steps that were off. You see this? No steps on that. See these stone steps? You guys can have all these. I built all these, I built these stone steps. You know, and that was $3,000 what you paid Parker to do. This had to been $20,000. I I replastered the front hallway. I took the power, power out, I replastered it. When Jessup did the rebuild and fixed the floor, he put in a panel, the panel didn't match. I went in and stained that to blend it to match. If you want to see a really nice, really nice visit, I picture the ones of all the lanterns that are replaced in here. Those lanterns were stolen sometime in the 70s. And I went online and I bought all the lanterns in Mercury and Quaker Ford. Yeah, and I cleaned the building. I took care of the building and all of a sudden I get a note. Robbed the windows to top. I took all the windows out, rebuilt them, the ones that were, and I purchased new ones that were salvage. I've got all, I've given you that all of it. And I'm just pissed off that the fact that not only did you get somebody else to do it and nobody really talked with me as a volunteer, but you got somebody to do it and did a shitty job. A really shitty job. And they did a shitty job on the woodworking too. If you look at that building there, the sign doesn't even cover the beam that I bought. And you approved it and you paid the guy for it. You know, and and who would do something like that? That's not, that's not restoration work. That's shit work. You know, and you can, you can say I can down here bust a ass, you know, Stan, you warned me, did a damn thing. You know, those are people down there today who want to have feelings too. You guys, this town of Brookline has shoved it up my ass, the way I look at it. You don't want to hear that word, but that's that's the way it feels now.
Let's let's keep it legit. Okay, let's just keep it legit. That's, I'm a hard boy in it.
He can say.
You had a responsibility to go about this the right way.
You are absolutely correct.
That's okay.
You pay interest.
How do we improve it? How do we improve it going forward? We could, we could beat it, beat it up all you want.
Pound on the drums, find more volunteers. You treat them like that, you're not gonna keep them very long.
I I hear you. I I I am very disappointed that the appointed committee with the round schoolhouse two past select board members did not follow normal protocol in a situation that they had known about for nine or 10 years. It's wrong. I agree.
I was doing that work for free and Cynthia said, we've got to go through committee, you've got to stop. So we go, that's why that beam's down there since 2009.
I understand.
Twelve years. I got, I got told to stop working because that's go through committee. They have $5,000 sitting there, so it's not a matter of nobody knows me, it's a matter of somebody doesn't like me. So that's the way we're hiring people.
No, that's not the case.
No, that's just, sorry, accurate.
Well, if you, I'm not saying it's you that, you put somebody onto the on the committee, why wouldn't they, why wouldn't they follow?
Maybe, I don't know. You know the people more better than I do. Is that situation is that?
Cynthia said, share, and I, we should say, we, and can't even read, can't even walk. We have been talking about this for a little while by trying to work out, how do I say this? A more responsive committee. Because it hasn't been responsive and it hasn't been responsive for years. In fact, I remember approaching Cynthia back, it's gotta be four years ago anyway, at Dutton's, asking her about that $5,000 grant and she said she would take care of it. And I'm not beating up Cynthia. She must have been 83 or 84 at the time. I'm not beating her up. But then it fast forwarded, somebody else will kind of take care of that grant. I'm not gonna mention any names. And that person was very capable and competent to do it and didn't do it. And it wasn't until the preservation of Vermont under new, was involved, because he died, the new guy Ben Doyle had taken over. They must have realized that was left over, that wasn't used and that's, otherwise we would have, we would have never even
Done about it.
Oh, we would know that about it, but we gave up because no one had acted on it. And I beat that drum back in 2015, 2016, all the, all taken, well done. Never happened.
So then when it does come, so it's adversity, it's gotta happen. You don't think of, that we take some people in town, the residents that have been doing the work, you take somebody from out of town to do it? Why, I don't understand why that would be the first person that you'd think of all. Geez, let's call them over Newtane. You know, my truck isn't visible enough that somebody would say, geez, babe, we've got two painters in town.
All right, well, we're gonna.
I'm getting the impression that we were trying to exclude you. That's not, that's just the way it was. If we had, if we had gone through normal, wait, please, if we were going through normal, Doc, let me finish.
One person.
I was spoken first. If we were going through a normal situation, Tom, where we were making a bid on something, it would take a time. We were under a drastic, you don't think that's a good excuse, but that's what happened. We had basically a two month, and if I remember, it was like June, we had to get paperwork in to approve it in order to get that money. So we put the pedal to the metal, so we could get that $5,000.
We did not get it.
Call me up and ask me, I can, I would give you an estimate. Did you?
No, we, we, it was not done. It was not by us.
What time?
We didn't, we, we were not, we were not running the meeting. We were not running the the committee for them. We were
Don't you approve all the money that is spent over there to the select board too?
We approved the spending of the money on the, based upon the work that was done on the pres, that yeah, we had scope of work and we had it approved, yes.
And scope of work, if you read that, go in and look at the minutes of the Round Schoolhouse Committee. They said that the windows were going to be restored. They said, I know, I'm making a point. We got, we got a lot of different information that we went ahead and assumed was correct. And it wasn't. So the scope wasn't even correct based on what they found out after the fact. And he also said, if you look at those, the shed was gonna be restored. So, you know, it's
Isn't that what a preservation grant is all about? Isn't it supposed to take, a historic preservation is supposed to restore it back to its original?
Absolutely.
You're not supposed to take a trunk, cut a chunk, four foot chunk out of a sill and put in a a a different species of wood in there that's already got particles, beetle holes in it?
Yeah, that's a whole story, you know. I I'm trying to help.
I don't see any, I don't. If you remember, there might be holes in there, but I looked at it, it's, it's, I didn't see any, I didn't see any dust from them. So I don't know if it's active or not. We don't have to replace it.
That's right. But, all right, ladies and gentlemen, this is gonna be a discussion.
This is gonna be a shooting.
I have a question.
I'm going to, I'd like to finish up with with Mr. Statts. Mr. Statts, I understand where you're coming from. You're not going to be satisfied with what was done. I just hope that in the future that you will see that things are going to be improved on. I'm learning. I really like to maintain continuity. I like working with the select board and active committees. I enjoy being here and replying.
And I appreciate the work you do very much and Stanley and and you groups, you know? I'm I'm just pissed off tonight. I got the whole situation. I, I've been somewhere you guys have been. And I wasn't gonna get mad at it. It's not you guys I'm at, I'm just mad at that my caliber. I'm mad at the situation.
Well, let's improve it.
You're saying that means a lot to me. Thank you, Tom.
Yes.
Well, let's improve it.
No, it's like for me, Stan, I very respect you. I don't think you you I think it's the other committee that that chose somebody else and I think that
But it's someone's fault, Tom. Tom, it's someone's fault.
But that's not the way we should be doing things in Brookline. We shouldn't be taking a person out of office
This is the exception of the rule. That was the exception of the rule of how I like to see things get done, honestly. In all respects. Mr. Statts, I know we do need to, we don't have
Yeah, my question is, is, is so who did contact the vendors that did, were allowed to do the work and also
The committee.
Specifically?
Yes.
Uh, I believe, well, again, looking at those minutes, Doug woman contacted the painter, Mr. Old, and Joe got a whole perspective. That's later.
I keep hearing the number 5,000, but it was 3,000 for the woodwork and it was $1,500 for the four windows. Where's the other five? A sign is gonna be there.
We're having a sign painted. It's gonna be more than five, but we're picking up the difference of it. I think it's a $650.
Possibly higher because of the original sentence.
But we're picking up
Preservation.
These two That local person did it for free last time.
And Joe and Doug still
Local person did it for free last time.
You understand, maybe. That may be.
It was also a new paint paint. Yeah, I'll, I might, my question
And then we, we had five bids to the sign. And we chose a local person to do it. And they, they were willing to do it in a way that replicates what's there, which is what the preservation trust And they, they were willing to do it in a way that replicates what's there, which is what the preservation trust requires. And so, you know, we did everything that was in our power to do the right thing. So, you know, that's an example of where our hearts really are. I'd just like to point that out.
Stan, I, I don't think you're, you've got, in you to, to be anything but honest. You know, my work, and I'm, I'm not accusing you of that, I'm just, I just, I just saw the work that was done there, the work that was approved. And it just appalled me because I, I tried so hard to do such a nice job on that, I look at what's done, and even the material, I, the material I supplied there, the beam, the rocks, everything, and, and it's like somebody took it and just moved it up. And what is, what is the follow-up on having that corrected? You know, what, are we going, are we going
We had, we had a wormhole in here two days ago, he has come in and he has done additional work.
He, he promised it by today he'd have it completely done, and it's so busy.
What about the siding that doesn't cover the framework?
That's another person, that's not
I know that's another person, but is, is that
I haven't had time to get it all done.
All, all I'm saying is
I will reach out and, and, and I will
My, my question was, is there gonna be follow-up if it's corrected?
I, I don't believe, there has been follow-up. Matter of fact, Gary was, I was wrong, you had pictures of there being two posts on the ground. I remember going in and out so many frigging times that there were, excuse me, there were boards on top of those, and I thought those boards were inching down.
They weren't cleaned out.
I, I know, I went, I went back and looked at the picture, and then that, that night, the other night, after you and Dot and I talked, I emailed Mr. Parker and I asked him about the length of the boards and about the trash pile that was inside. Never got a response, but I was told by Guy that I saw him here the next morning, I can think it was relatively early, getting the trash out of there. And I went back and I thought, and I actually asked him, I said, I've been told by someone that's does a lot of work in restoration, did more than you're name ditch and trouble. And that the barn board should have come down to the bottom part of the sill. And he had not responded to that. But in the pictures you have here, the pictures I have before anyone began working on it, because I did it before and after, so the preservation trust would know what was there. The barn boards come down, they're not below the, the bottom of the sill, they did not cover the entire sill uh, as, as it appears in the photographs, if you look at this
The sill, the sill went all the way to the ground. That, that sill was originally, if you look at those photos, was along the ground and ran in front of the doors.
I just saw some that don't have that, they show a layer of rocks or two,
Right.
And there, and the two boards, three boards over in the corner, which would be the northeast corner, I'm sorry, northwest corner,
I cut those boards off.
Are off for those, he probably did, I don't know.
What, what I'm saying is, that sill used to be on the ground, and it was rotted on the ground. So I thought, what I would do is I build this, a stone wall because this stuff had built up. So I built the stone wall up to the level of the other wall. And was going to place the, and I cut all the rotten boards off. So they weren't, if they weren't rotten enough, they shouldn't have been replaced with some that are.
Well, that's the thing, I don't know, but I don't see that, there's so many people, I talked with the people before we took this over, which finally, we didn't get approvals on the twenty-eighth of June, with the job having to be done by August first. That we were, that Doug was able on that day to send a note saying, you can go to it. I have no idea, Joe, Joe Doug told us that he had talked with the president of PBT, Preservation Trust of Vermont, with PBT. And we went over all this with him. So, me getting into it firsthand, after everything's been talked about with somebody else, is when they have asked him that. Are you sure, Joe, they're gonna do this, are you sure you, Joe, you're gonna do that? And Joe's having a discussion with them and tells us, yeah, it's all taken care of. I've already talked to them about. But we felt, knowing what you guys go through on the meeting house, you gotta send the paperwork. So, it, it, I, I find myself saying regarding Mr. Parker, if he showed up and, and that's, the, the wa, the length of the boards that were already cut, he's likely, and I'm not trying to make excuses for him, but looking at trying to be fair to everybody involved as best I can, without being brutal or nasty, is that he probably figured he'd finish what is there and make it look presentable. And didn't even think of saying, let's bring them down to the ground where we ought to be. So that's gonna excuse, and I'm just trying to be an intermediary, justifying
I, I covered it, I just pulled the chainsaw off. That, that's what, because they were rotted, the whole bottom, the building had rotted out. I cut it off with a chainsaw so I could work there. And I cut it right to where they were good. They would be, they needed to be replaced when the beam would come here, at, at the right length. Uh, so, I mean,
I, I, it
You can make excuses for Mr. Parker, but that's his business.
Yeah.
And we should know that, you've got, the framework needs to be covered up, you don't want your framework exposed, so.
Well, we, we will be re, getting in touch with Mr. Parker again, as you do with Norm, Norm gave him some follow-up work. And I will talk personally with Mr. Parker about his concerns. It doesn't help the fact that you weren't, you weren't considered for the bid, it wasn't honest. But I do wanna share with you that I have asked that committee, and I, a quote from a letter sent July twenty-seventh, that you want to remain active as a Brookline Historical Committee. The select board would like you to hold a warm meeting to discuss the issues as soon as possible, but before August thirteenth. The select board meets on August fourth and August eighteenth. If you would like, we ought to add to the agenda in office, please let us know. Um, and so, uh, yeah, we, we, I, I realize that it's really not a functioning committee. And like I said, I would like to span it. And I would like to reestablish around schoolhouse meeting. That's where I'm going at. And I will hopefully fresh start making some different, I will try to be more conscious of the communities um, and such, and I, I appreciate your coming this evening. Um, but if you could move on to some other things, we have a very long agenda that we all need to patch you up, but I do need to move on.
I have one other issue that, aside from around schoolhouse. Perhaps I, I should wait for another one, I mean, I would just, my question is, uh, to the select board, when I came here uh, probably a month or two ago, and I, I saw you
Yes.
Doug and Guy was out there, and wife, my great is out there. And we talked about the gravel situation.
I'm having it.
And, um, then I asked about the road commissioner, and you had stated at that time that we have a road commissioner, but mostly just in name. Because the road commissioner hasn't really showed up at any, hasn't been at many meetings. And, uh, so the select board is doing lots of, the, uh, you're doing the, who's filing, when I asked who's filing for grants, you said, well, that's
David Jones, David Jones is
So the select board
Yes.
So I know
I know Archie, I think Archie has, I think there's, well, I, I don't have any
Well, it's worth clarifying something there. I'm finishing working on grants that I started working on with Mark prior to Archie coming back as road commissioner. So I, I don't wanna overstate what my involvement is.
So my question, I guess, would be to the board, do we have an, an active road commissioner? And if, and if we do, I was, I, I was road commissioner for, for, uh, six years about. And through, through IRV, and I took all the classes that were offered by, by the department down there. And had a rapport with, with both John Alexander and Mark Pickering at the time. And filed for the grants. They told me that grants for something that, um, filed for them even if you got your grants in town, you had your, because at the end of the year, there's always money kicking around, and if there's, there's a grant on file, but you get the money. I ended up getting two ninety thousand dollar overalls that way. But, so my question goes back to, um, and this is no, no offense to Mark, I read the minutes, I saw that Mark's now being treated like a, an employee in town with decent benefits a day. And congratulations, Mark, I think, I think Mark's a, a great, uh, asset to the town. But when I was road commissioner, I worked closely with Mark as to how we, and, and I worked with the select board as to what we were gonna do in the season, present it to the select board and try to put a dollar out to it. Um, it seems like on Whitney Hill in particular, because I live there, that road hasn't, hasn't, hasn't had grading since the spring. Here it is, the middle of August. The ditches are still full of the winter, uh, stuff I got down there, this, you know, full of stones out there. So we have, we have this issue where we have a road commissioner that is supposed to be reviewing those things. There, there's a dip from my house down, the ditch is completely filled in. Runs across the road, road to Palms, Mark driveway and out. Uh, the, the damage, uh, that we got from this last storm was significant in all the towns. I'm not saying we wouldn't have gotten the damage. But we would have limited a lot, a lot of the damage if the roads were, somebody was, was going and ditching that road, that, that road up through there, both sides of my driveway are full of ditches. Sam Warren went up through his machine and broke the hole so the water could run into there. So it's, um, it's obvious to me that nobody's looking at that. Mark, Mark will do the work, but when I was the road commissioner, we would walk the road, we would say, this road we're gonna ditch this year. And, and then present what we're gonna do. I, it seems like we got a road commissioner that's, in my opinion, is not doing that, but then when the roads wash out, we hire the road commissioner's company to come and fix it, you know, it seems the road commissioner sells this gravel on the road that, that turns into mud, and when we need to fill it in, we hire, we buy stone from this, from our road commissioner to fix the road, it, it seems like
Alright, Mr. Stacks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to, to, I'm gonna say one thing. I remember the day that you came into the office, and it was a few days, maybe, maybe the day before, it was a Tuesday probably, because I was in the office, the office was open. Probably the next day was the select board meeting. Go to that meeting, we asked Mark specifically about the quality of the type of gravel, the size of the rock, what was being used on Whitney Hill, all the things that she brought up. And Mark gave a, a lengthy explanation about the materials that were used, the lack of some of the materials that he wished that were available. But he gave an expert opinion and description, it's written up in our minutes, and I can't remember exactly the date of it to tell you, but it's also videotaped. But we did address those things when somebody brings it to, to my attention, and can try to talk to the person responsible. Uh, as far as the storm goes, uh, Archie has become, uh, has been emailing me, I am aware of what's going on in the community. And I'm still trying to get up to speed, this is a huge job for me, and I, again, will have to say that I, I'm trying the best I can to get everything done. We're very happy to have Mark here, his expertise and knowledge will help us. I did talk to Mark about Whitney Hill a couple of days ago, and we put the cones out and, and when is he gonna be upgraded, Mark?
Well, it's a lot of story.
Yeah.
We don't have
Wait, 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 wait. I, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna get in here. This is seriously out of topic. This is no means by aggression to shut you up. But I was
I tend to have to say I'm, I'm gonna
Okay, I was gonna say, if you wanna go on about it, I would suggest you put it on the next meeting, which I'm sure Doug would be willing to do, and we can discuss it later. You don't have the time to have Mark on for half an hour to answer a question, when he still has his road work to explain as well. Personally, I don't wanna get him in a lot of trouble.
Yeah, we should try to keep the meetings to eight, they're
We're, we're way out of topic, it's, we're way out of topic. You both have been speaking for a better part of forty, forty-five minutes now. Two minutes are not allowed to each person. We've been more generous with time, again, I wanna say, this is nothing about shutting you both up. This has to do with time, and if you wanna reinstitute the discussion, we'd be happy to do it. And this would also give us an opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves and get things in order.
Right.
And, and any questions, rather than having a lot of questions.
We had a schedule that we were holding meeting with the topic last week coming here. And that's, that could be to your best interest and ours as well.
Well, I appreciate you giving me the extra time, I don't have the opportunity to get away from the house so long.
I'm sure.
Hang on, I'll look if you like.
Can I just, give five minutes before Tom goes there? I, I, my job is, uh, probably, and stuff, the, you know, line up gravel. Uh, one of the things Brooklyn doesn't do is, is have a gravel delivered to the area where it's accessible by me in a truck to go out and fly whenever I feel the need. I have to contact their local vendors. The vendors outside of town with trees and stuff, get the materials here. And so I kinda have to rely on our local vendor, they have a large pit in town, which is very handy. And when I need it, I have to match their schedule to be in town with the grader ready to meet their trucks to apply it. It does save the town a lot of money. I know there's lack of road work due to the way Brookline has no equipment. I can only do so much with the grader, so much with the shovel. I do travel the roads regularly and write down everything that needs to be done, and then I have the ability to rent once I, you know, with the select board to rent a, an excavator to do the type of work I want to do. Covid came along and it kinda dragged things out of the long line. Sorry about the issue of all of this. It's basically a lack of material, lack of equipment. I know I could go and make phone calls to get everything done, but pardon you know, with me working for the town once I get to do some of the work, if I'm if I'm the guy maintaining the overalls, I should be the guy putting in rooms, maintaining. So, it's been tough, and it's aggravating to me to not keep the roads up the way I would like to see them, the way the state would like it to see them. It's such a slow, painful process, and I apologize. The, I had a long, I had these projects that I talked about to accomplish. Whitney Hill, as you know, this is a row of trees that was cut, that's very narrow. Eroting section of the road, I tried to get grants, but grants don't follow, but because water isn't close enough to a major stream. My idea was for last summer, it got bumped to this summer. And then we had the flood. But my, my idea is the section right now, it's the worst in Whitney Hill. It's a tough one in the winter, wow. And I'm gonna widen from lightest driveway down around the corner, there's some ledge that I'd like to have hammered out. And extend it over and over so that when you meet people, one of you don't have to back up and go the other way. I do, uh, you know, having the pit in town, it's huge. I believe they process the gravel, making tree products at once at times, other times crushing ledge. So I think there was some quality improvements in gravel that they lacked, uh, some stonemint that did get a little wishy there. Our weather's nowadays are changing. And we're getting more, you know, when winter gets here, the roads freeze. And when the sun comes out, it saws them right out, turns into mud, and we keep applying crushed stone, and I believe we're making real progress in the quality of the road. We've talked about maybe putting some fabric under the road to help, but still the surface is gonna freeze up the minute that you get the sunshine and the warm temperature, so. I, I know Archie doesn't come into the meetings, and I appreciate working under you, Tommy, you're great, you can go out and look at a lot of stuff. And I, I do ask for help through Archie to come and look. I know that he's like you, a full-time guy. Doesn't have a lot of spare time, and that's kind of the way it's been working. I am, like Dave said, we had some grants that got halted during Covid. And then we had, we now, the power was involved with moving some power. Get one of the grants done and now the trees are cut on Parker Road, we have a back road grant there, and also working with, uh, Jeff Nugent down at, um, Women Regional Commission, and he's, comes up and walks in tells me what he wants done on the new, uh, Clean Water Act erosion grant. So I do have some grants going, and you know, with people coming and going, it gets complicated, and, uh, Jeff, yeah, Jeff Nugent is, is here to help me on grants.
I, I want your, I'd also step up on
I, I also asked Archie, you know, from here on out, if you wanna take over some of these grants, to see if they get that help with the new stuff, so.
Alright, I, I
But there, I just wanna say, I apologize for those conditions, we're changing the way things are gonna get done, and hopefully make some
Well, thank you very much for your explanation, you gave me a
Thank you for your time.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming.
Goodnight.
Alright.
Goodnight.
Nice, thank you.
I need my
I did notice we had another person join the, uh, soon rename this evening. There's no name associated with it, it says admin, do you identify who you are?
What is that?
Is there someone online that says admin?
Yes, Marie Tattersall, can you hear me?
Okay, Marie, thank you, I'm, I'm just gonna change your, um, I'm, I'm just gonna change your, I'll change your names so that we know who you are and we can then address you because.
God, I didn't know how to do that.
I'll do it. Okay, my brain opened. All right. All right, so I did say at the beginning of the meeting, Marie, that if we had people who came in online or in person, that we would put that agenda item up. So I am going to move to item number, highways and roads, item number eight, D as in Dorothy, and item number two. It says, discussion about opening the ditch on Grassy Brook Road near the cattle stalls for 200 feet to mitigate future flash flooding issues. Estimated about $2,000, Archie Clark will check at the H to see if natural resources, Scott Jensen to see if a permit is needed, and is town willing to be the project. And a brief summary, where we and Chuck Tattersall on Grassy Brook Road had a very large flooding issue on the night of July 29, I guess it was. And although I didn't see it personally, I understand it was pretty much a large wave around her house in Invervee Smith. And in my calling 911, she was able to get the, the Dallas Fire Department in to do some pumping. And when we reached out and wanted to know about the stream bed up behind their house and if it was re-rooted and if another culvert could solve the problem. I contacted Mark Bills, and he worked with Archie, and we contacted Chuck. The three of them went up behind the building, up behind the houses on Grassy Brook Road and followed the stream and saw where the diversion was. So I'm gonna let Mark very briefly talk about the project, and then Marie, I'll let you address how you'd like to see a remedy. Although I did tell Archie I was gonna table any decisions on this because I needed to speak a little bit more with him about it, but he did keep me abreast of it and we needed the information that I was able to have a conversation and know what I was saying. So Mark, what did you find? Could you tell us about that water problem?
Okay, I believe that years of hard rains, especially this last one that came to us a couple of weeks ago, created this issue that Mr. and Mrs. Tattersall are having now. The water comes from spring sources and runoff high up on Putney Mountain. So as it gathers, it comes down into a ravine. When it reaches the plateau behind Tattersall's house, enough material has, has come downstream and built up to the point where there's no longer like the narrow stream bed. It's, it's just a big rubble of holders and gravel. And as you get further away from the spread of the water, then you're just in some finds with mud and a lot of alders. And so the, the solution to the problem would be to recreate a stream bed around the house. And with today's standards and practices, you can't do that unless specific people from agency of natural resources are reached to, to decide how this is the remedy. So Archie Clark is the excavator contractor who works with the A and R a lot throughout the summer months. And so he was gonna make that phone call to see if he could have A and R come to, to, to a site visit.
Okay, I can, I can tell that Archie did write to me. He said that the A and R said that it's a non-reportable stream issue. As long as the work is done by October 1st.
Right.
We'll be satisfied with it. So how would you say to remedy that issue and then?
Just walking with Archie and Mr. and Mrs. Tattersall, we all agreed that the right excavation machine to get in there and, and pull material back to keep the water confined to a narrow path so that where it first jumps out of the stream bed needs to be redefined, needs to have a channel and build the bank up so that the water during a, a high amount of water rain would flow.
Between, yeah.
Yeah, because it, it goes so close to the back of Tattersall's outbuildings. It's always in jeopardy of another, you know, quick hard rain is gonna do the same thing. It's gonna put a moat around the lower part of the house. And the fact that the basement floor is lower than the water table, it's gonna fail. So it definitely needs, with all our town working near water, we do have to stop by October 1st, that's state law. So a lot of times A and R, if you're in okay agreement with them to work in these brooks, they like it to be during the dry time of season. Like some of these is, is not a year-round brook, it's more strange and dry. So normally, this time of year, it would be.
Empty dry. So not normal year.
Yeah, this isn't a normal year. And ten-day forecast shows rain, rain, rain.
Marie, I, I hope you were able to hear what Mark was saying. We spoke briefly on the phone this morning, and I was pretty floored by what you said. And I was wondering if you would like to address the select word this time.
Sure. The problems are not on our property. They're on two other properties that are upstream from us. And based on the discussed estimate of $2,000 of excavation work, we are willing to pay for or reimburse the town for that because it's protecting our property. And time is a big issue. There's only about six weeks till October 1st. So to move this along, we're willing to pay approximately $2,000 to get that done and rebuild the bank that's eroded over the last 10 or 12 years.
Oh, I, I, yeah. So Marie called this morning. She was one of the residents who also offered to make a contribution by the wet drive back in the meeting house. And when we got done talking about that, she said, by the way, and we had this conversation. So Marie and Mark, and I, I hope you don't mind, I hope two weeks will be okay with you. What I would like to do is I already reached out to Archie Clark. I'd like to meet with him to talk about this and to see a timeframe and to see how exactly this payment stuff gets done. But I will have an answer in two weeks for you, Marie. And if, if that's all right with you, I will keep in touch and follow up on it. And I'll have an answer by September 1st on, on a time that that can be done and, and how best to, to do this. Is that all right with you, Marie?
That sounds great. Thank you. Thank you, well.
I would, I would just like to add that right now, the town does not own the proper piece of equipment to do that job. It's possible to rent the right piece of equipment. But I think talking with Archie Clark, who does have the type of equipment, maybe we might be able to all work together to.
Exactly.
Make sure that something gets done before.
Marie also said that she would help if we needed to get permissions from any other vendors to do that. And if you don't mind, Marie, I will, I will work with you with that. Is that possible?
Sure, that's fine. I have contact information for Priscilla Bell, but not for the bigger landowner.
All right, well, we'll hold on the phone the next day or so and set things up. And I appreciate that. That's a very generous offer. And I know we're a little tight on money this year already with everything else happening. But thank you for joining us this evening. Very generous in supporting the town, and hopefully it will also reduce any flooding in the near future and sooner than that later.
Yes, if nothing's done, it's not gonna change.
Yes, it's not, something needs to be.
Thank you, well.
Thank you, Marie.
Thanks, Marie.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you again, Mark, for your time on that. So we're gonna, we're gonna move back along here to our agenda. Item number six, 2021 dash 22, sorry, it's a number, we're wrong. Sand bid, can we go to public in the Rattover former? It's the same bid as last year. I'm gonna read it out loud, and then I'll make a motion to approve it. Town of Brookline invitation to bid winter sand. Bids are being solicited for winter sand for applications of the other roads in the town of Brookline for the 21, 22 season. The approved vendor will agree to deliver the sand to the town's sand shed as needed during the winter season within seven days of it being requested. The vendor will be responsible to mix the sand with the road salt as directed by the Brookline Road Supervisor as it goes into the shed bay. A sample of the material of approximately one quart size container must be submitted for assessment and evaluation by the town road supervisor along with the bid. The bid must clearly state the delivered cost per yard of the material. The town of Brookline reserves the right to inspect all sand deliveries and will reject any material that does not meet the standards set when the bid was accepted. The town also reserves the right to reject any and all bids and to accept the bid as it deems most favorable to the town. Send bid September, Brookline, P O Box 403, Brookline, Vermont, 05345, or hand-delivered to 734 Grassy Brook Road, Brookline, Vermont. Attention with the sand bid. Sealed bids will be opened at 6:35 PM on September 1st, 2021. At a regular select board meeting. For further information, contact Mark Bills, your supervisor, 802-258-1389. Do you think two weeks, do you think September 1st is enough time to get, I mean, if I get it in the newspaper tomorrow or get the context for tomorrow, maybe we'll have.
I would say that would be sufficient.
Okay, I will also put this on front, not, uh, front porch form and/or our list serve so that everybody can see what we are bidding in case they don't notice it in the newspaper.
Send me a copy too, so that we can look at it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, all right. I would like to make a, I, I'll do this way. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Town of Brookline invitation to bid for winter sand as red. We have a second, second, seconded by Stan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the winter sand bid as, as red, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Oh, okay, so that I did vote. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Aye. All right, thank you. The appointment to the Brookline Planning Commission, we did have a motion and voted to appoint Mr. Daniel Gilparner to the planning commissioner. So that's very good. I have nothing for item C. We're gonna move on to old business, round schoolhouse grant work. Briefly discussion about the window work, carpentry work, appointed committee members' roles, pest control, and additional repairs needed. Can I just summarize what we're looking at?
How do you like to do that?
Would you do that to summarize what happened between the windows? We had a little lengthy discussion earlier with Mr. Stats and Mary Carey, but we can just, the select one to do.
Yeah, the, the work that was contracted out, the, the personal discussion that apparently happened between the historic commission and the vendor that was to do the windows, I found out two days ago, was only to do the exterior of the windows, not to do both sides of the windows. So the question that came up about the inside not being done properly, there was a reason for it. It wasn't intended to be in scope of work. But we didn't know that. And unfortunately, we're going behind people, checking on this and that. We just don't, by human nature, think of asking the simple question, are you gonna, when you repair the windows, aren't you gonna do both sides? I mean, it seems so obvious and upfront to begin with, but in any event, that wasn't done. The, the second thing was that some of the exteriors of some of the windows, not all of them, were not done to the standard of a normal professional job. That was brought to my attention by Tom Stats. I, that evening emailed the painter, and he indicated he'd take care of it by today, Wednesday, the 18th, I think, yep. And so I haven't had time to go over and look at what he's done. And for those of you who aren't able to see, Bruce said that he has done it. And as far as I can tell at this point, I mean, it appears that he has fulfilled his contract as he understood it. And I, I don't know what recourse we have, because that's how it was set up originally, and he just didn't know about.
Yes, I mean, that's perfectly explained. How about the carpentry work? You wanna say a point?
One point.
Bruce?
The vendor, same vendor that worked on the windows in schoolhouse pulled the same thing and why didn't actually put the inside of the windows after it was discussed and concluded that he was gonna do the windows. So this has happened twice. I just want the select board to remember this in the future, that if we hire this vendor again, that we have to be more than clear, it's inside and outside man. When we say windows, it's the whole windows. Because I went over with this, with this vendor last time, and he, he fessed up and did it, but not before he asked, not before he put his hand out and asked him to move on. And David will remember that, and I'm sure Gwen will too. So that's all I have to say.
All right, so we probably would not recommend in our end of this. All right, discussion about the carpentry work done at the round schoolhouse.
Uh, yeah, again, there was loose language utilized. And, you know, when you're looking at a sill that is rotted, one doesn't think it's splicing in a four-inch piece of wide stripping for something that's seven inches wide and seven inches high is the fix. But apparently, that is what was agreed to with the historic commission individual who discussed the job with Mr. Parker. And so he, he did what he understood it to be. I didn't realize that until after we, we looked at what he had done and brought back to the discussion they had with the commissioner of, of the, one of the commissioners of the round schoolhouse, and then realized that splicing in doesn't mean a whole seven-by-seven piece. It could very well mean a four-by, four-inch foot, four-foot and a half, wide by six feet deep by four foot thick, uh, four inches thick. So the, the trim is even. It's, the wood used was fine in terms of the quality of it. There's no cracks. It's aged like the original stuff. The remaining issue that, and I, the remaining issue is that the, the boards do not cover entirely the sill to which they're attached. There's about a three-inch space of the bottom of the sill that's exposed. And so, you know, and, and I don't know whether there will be, and I sense, I would be surprised if there was a comeback by the, by the contractor based on the limited exposure I've had along the way. The discussion that occurred at the round schoolhouse between Mr. Duncan and myself back around, or about the 8th or 9th of June, it became apparent that there were a number of things that could have been done in the building that were not asked to be done. Phrasiology that materialized was, well, he might also, if there's money left over, repair the stack to the toilets. He might also repair the two boards in the southwest corner, gable wall of the shed. When I did the scope of work, I thought I'd do my best by clarifying those. I did not even think that this gentleman would even deal with a stack to a, a, a privy, basically a, a four-hole privy. So I didn't include that. What I did include was that the two boards in the southwest corner would be replaced. It was, we, I had a phone discussion with him. It was in the scope of work, and wouldn't you know that when the work was done, those two boards were not replaced. He was called back, he replaced those two boards in an appropriate way. And it took my emailing him, a call, to get that work to be done. So when we're talking about the potential, they have somebody replace all of the siding boards, the west wall, which he only put a few boards in. It was, there were three boards missing on the west wall. He replaced more than that, and it looks like a solid wall, except it doesn't go down far enough on the sill, which means that it's not gonna protect the sill that's there. And then on the north wall, which is the one that needed the majority of the work, I, I doubt, I mean, I hope we can, and I'm not trying to imply that I'm against it, but based on my experience today, I doubt that that's gonna happen. And, and I, I have come to look at it in terms of, we had a total of $5,000 to spend. It's probably like the meeting house. It was a furnace, uh, that was gonna be put in, a gas, uh, hot air or, or heat exchanger. They hired a guy that had been in the business for twenty-seven years. He agreed to do it. He ordered it. It's there. You find out that all the holes into the gas and the exhaust are on the wrong end of the thing. And so what do you do? You, you know, you're, you're halfway through the mess that you're dealing with and so you think that, well, the, the basic interior of the barn is protected. The snow, the rain, the elements is kept out. Uh, that foundation wall, it's on the north gate wind is solid. Uh, and the guy did a decent job other than the length of the boards, on the framing of that north gable wall. The, the wall on the back, the west wall that has the product sill that is partially blocked off and, and, and repaired is straight, protecting it from the west, predominant west winds. So I, I don't know how far we're gonna go with that, but that's the summary as I see it. That's what happened. And, uh, and I would welcome anyone else entering the fray, but I, at this point, he hasn't even returned my, my email to me the other night of, I will be there tomorrow and take care of it. Nothing, just silence. The only way I knew he was there was Guy Tanza told me.
You wanna say something, Bruce? Is there ever gonna, move on? Go ahead.
We'll review that whole scene. One. Two, he should not be doing it. If it costs us more money to fix it right, we fix it right. I would suggest, I can't do it now, but I would say by October, I should, my time should be a lot easier, that several of us walk around, look at the nature of the wood, the entire structure of that addition, and, and, and correct it. This isn't rocket science. This isn't hard. This isn't hard work at all. It's just a material issue, the way I see it, and doing it. We don't need to hire somebody that's not gonna do the work correctly and call it back, and back, and back, goodbye. Let's move on and do that.
All right, well, we will bring this up at another time and I appreciate that offer and I think we also have communications from other people in town.
Yes. One more minute.
Yes, I had put together a list, which did not appear on the last agenda because of the, the number of items that we had, but I created a list as I walked around it of things that needed to be done on that building. I believe I sent it to all the select.
Yes.
I have here.
If I'm not mistaken, it's seventeen items long and afterward, I'd like one more to go that I could add to that list. So
Yes.
it's, there's a lot of things like that. There's a big list of things to be done and it's not gonna be an easy task in time.
But yeah, I have the list here. It's nineteen items, very thorough. It's in, um.
It shouldn't be enough then if there are many answers.
Yeah, that's another issue.
All right, we're gonna continue on. Um, I think I already did this discuss about the important committee members' roles. I, as I said out there, for the select word's intention next week, next month, the, uh, hopefully that dissolved and that of establishing the round schoolhouse, many end of the year people. All right, um, discussed additional, additional repairs at the round schoolhouse. Did you wanna table that for now? With nineteen items?
Other, other than including one comment, a last select board meeting, I'd ask to spend up to a hundred dollars for barns. Uh, waiting a new thing had a stack of boards that reached seven feet long and that would have filled nicely some of the requirements, missing lumber in the current building. I went over there one time, she forgot about it, didn't show up. I went back the following Sunday after she called me and says, whoop, there was a mistake. And by the way, my husband told you to look at the wrong pile of boards, because I did look at a pile of boards and they were nothing that we wanted in that building, in our building. Uh, she went up to the third level of her barn, handed down stuff and none of the, none of the materials were, were adequate for our needs. There were slit, broken. Uh, our boards are almost an inch thick. Those were like three quarters of an inch. So it just wouldn't have worked and so I didn't buy them.
Okay, thank you.
Let's get Mr. Bills in that later. Would, you'll deal with that later.
Okay. Pest control?
Yep, now we're gonna do the town hall, discussion about pest control at the office, rodents and insects.
No, no, it, it, oh, you wanna do the pest control under the town hall instead of the round schoolhouse?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My mistake. Discussion about pest control in the round schoolhouse.
Okay, Guy Kane, uh, guy, not Guy Tanza, fellow from Abatum came and looked at it. There's nothing that needs to be done in this, in that building and frankly, as a thirty-second issue, the town hall is clear. There's no, no extermination needed here either. No extermination needed in our building. The damage that's been done, he claims, and this is where, uh, Mr. Mello was absolutely correct. He claims if you put linseed oil over it, it doesn't kill them. What it does is it breaks up the breeding cycle. So when the larvae develop into metamorphosis into a beetle, a beetle comes out and lays its eggs. The fellow, and it's starched in the wood that the larvae love. So if you cover the wood over it with linseed oil, they will not lay their eggs in that wood. That's what breaks the cycle and gets rid of them. The question, which I forgot to ask, because he told me a whole stuff I didn't even wanna know or need to know about insect extermination, was I didn't ask him whether that meant we get to paint the entire interior with linseed oil. Because if they come out of one piece of furniture, will they go into something that doesn't have a way? So I've emailed him today asking for an answer to that question, because I don't wanna be negligent and not, and not look at that aspect as a possible.
I don't think so, but we'll see what happens.
Yes, she would have said, I meant the name, it's quite a character, huh? Me? Yes. All right, so we did one, two, three, uh, discuss additional repairs, um, the listed nineteen, can we table that for another reading, Stan?
I'm sorry?
We'll talk about the repairs to the round schoolhouse.
The other repairs.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 please, please. Thank you, thank you. Very kind of you. Yeah.
We're gonna table item E, seven E. All right.
That was a small P. Table.
Small table. All right, town hall, discussed pest control, the town office, rodents and insects. Well, basically you said that the insects, there's no problem because those were old mud tubes.
The mud tubes are from wasps. The damage that is done to the sill is because of carpenter ants. There's no noise, there's no sawdust. He said it's not active, but he did something that I wouldn't dare to do. I don't know if anybody else would. Where all the, the poops from the mice are, he stuck his hand up there and pulled out a handful of mice excrement and put it into a plastic cup. And he said, wow, you had a problem with mice. And when he, when he was up there with his hands, he felt, he actually felt into that area where the carpenter ants were. They had eaten out an area, uh, it's one and a half inch thick sill and probably about an inch of that is eaten up to about a length of four inches or so. He said we oughta fill that with some kind of rodent prevented foam. And he said that there's another area in that sill further over toward the corner that similarly should be filled with a foam. But there's no active infestation, no need, no need for any extermination whatsoever. We're clear.
Hallelujah.
But.
All right, now you got the mice.
But.
But.
You were explaining also that, uh, you were explaining about the quality of all the starts coming around the building. Why don't you, why don't you explain that?
Is that, is that the time to that?
Yeah, yeah, it's right there.
All right, the guy that, the exterminator was really good. As I said, he wanted to know, wanted to know, but it was, it was helpful. In any event, he decided as a part of his thorough investigation, not just to look at that one area, but look at the interior of the foundation and crawl space. He found two areas, one in that corner over there, which I guess is the southeast corner. And where the last person that was here, uh, Mr. Boswick was there.
Yes.
Okay, there's an area there that is, if you get there and look at the crawl space in the dark, you come in, take your first step up onto the crawl space and look immediately to your right along the wall. In the middle of the day, you see light. You see light. So he's, he recommended that we fill both of those spaces.
Exactly over this one.
Yeah, in this corner, he says it kinda goes down and he says he can't see where it goes out and he can see light coming out.
Well, he should have filled it.
Well, he didn't, he's not on his job. He doesn't have it in charge.
No, 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 Scott.
Scott, oh, yeah, Scott.
He should have filled it. That's a different issue.
So those are, that's, that's that.
All right.
Okay, so just to wrap that up, town, uh, B A, we, by winter, we're gonna have the building sealed regardless. Then we can go into the cleaning schedule with some of that. And I, I think it was mentioned once, once a month or something like that, or?
Every other month.
Every other month. Do you have, who's that guy? That's one.
Okay, yep, um, as far as the cleaning schedule, uh, October, December, February, April, and June, I will get the actual dates, uh, from David. He's gonna fill in this book and now we're gonna create schedule so that we can let the staff know that there's gonna be somebody in the building. All right, um, now back to reports. Uh, Mr. Tanza? Guy, Guy Tanza, town clerk report.
Uh, okay, it's been, again, it's been very busy in the office. A lot of refinancing, a lot of conveyances of, uh, land and, um, just people going into trust and so forth. And, um, so that's kept us very busy. Plus, the rain, uh, the storm kept us busy because people, we have one phone number and all the phone calls are channeled into the town office, but that's okay. Uh, other than that, everything's good. We've had a few more dog licenses sold. Uh, we still have probably about twenty to go. Uh, I'm not sure about that. Filing for taxes are down to about a little over twenty-two hundred dollars. I'm pleased with that. There's just two people that I'm not sure about. But, uh, the COVID virus is setting a new kind of standard, so I've gotta look at that before I get into a tax sale. The other thing is that I've been working with the listeners and I just wanna let you know that the town maps have been all updated. Uh, they will be almost, uh, on the state side. We have them in town. I've already, uh, installed them on our machines, uh, Cartographic Solution, C S I. Uh, Susan Basel did an incredible job working with Helen and, uh, Mike, uh, Mike Bills. And, um, we're, we're really where we should be and we're moving in the right direction. So good thing to happen in the office. It's been busy and just bear with us. We do the best we can with two days a week.
All right, one.
Yes, Stan? I, I'd like to offer a word of praise for guys. When I did the, uh, survey of benefits to town employees and so forth, looking at tax rates, one of the things I did, which I did not present in that list, is the level of tax delinquency in all of those towns. The lowest one was thirty-five thousand dollars outstanding in the.
Really?
And one of them had a ninety-nine thousand dollar outstanding in delinquent taxes. So here are our town clerk, you know, the two thousand dollar number is amazing.
In the last four years, we've had zero.
Right.
So zero. Uh, the people in the town have realized that they have a responsibility and they have to be rewarded. And the few folks that, for whatever reason, um, they start to see that they have to make a payment.
Good job.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Yeah, I will talk to you about the door list. There are four by the dogs that have passed away or have moved out of town that I am aware of and I'll.
Oh, there is, uh, one last thing. Uh, I'm hoping to have a meeting on the second week of September of the Board of Civil Authority to go over the voted checklist, which must be done by the fifteenth or the eighteenth. So, uh, I will get that out next week. I will mail you a copy of the voted checklist. We basically have to find out who, uh, shouldn't be on that list, because in the next general election in twenty twenty-four, uh, we will be mailing out ballots of all people in the state of Vermont.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna quickly go through my select word chair report, um, vendors.
I wish you could turn it on me.
All right, for, for vendors, we do, we did receive them a, a list of for payroll processing, for bi-weekly payroll processing, which sort of coincides again with bi-weekly accounts payable processing. We have to try to stay within the dates that this treasurer needs to work with. So in most cases, the timesheets and, uh, if you want, something that's due, for example, uh, for the Saturday the fourteenth, uh, was the last day you could submit statements for the, being paid on the payroll for the eighteenth, uh, meeting, which is tonight. So we need like a, it's like a four-day buffer that he needs, uh, in order to get the checks processed. Um, and anybody needs another copy of this, please see me on rate for your to me from May third. Uh, recycle versus junk left roadside, that's, different residents have approached me and I've talked with Dan Tower, who's helping us with the recycling. Uh, I'm going to make us some kind of form with people's information, with information on how to get rid of a washing machine that's left by the side of the road through Lake Paul. We don't have a, a, a policy otherwise, but I'm going to try to be as friendly as possible for getting, uh, junk that's left roadside, uh, removed. Uh, number three, ARPA funds received. We did receive the ARPA funds, uh, correct deposited into the account. Uh, we have planning for using the funds discussion. I did write to, um, uh, the ARPA Resources at Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Uh, Wyndham Regional Commission is, is, is going to be working on providing some guidelines for us for the ARPA funds. Um, I do wanna say that, um, uh, Kate Buckley, who's the director for ARPA Assistance and Coordinations Program, is going to be in Southern Vermont, meeting individually with other towns on Wednesday the twenty-sixth. And she'd be happy to swing by Brookline and talk with you about eligible uses if you're interested. And I'd like, if you would like Wyndham Regional to join us, you can invite them as well. I would like to invite her to come on. I can certainly be here on Wednesday the twenty-sixth of August. When, uh, I can.
Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday the twenty-sixth. I'm gonna call her and tell her I could, and I will email out if anybody else wants to come in and listen. We can certainly not worry about corn. It would be interesting to hear what she has to say. So that's.
We can ask.
You can ask her questions as well, so I will talk to her about that. Um, also, Seveds would like, since we made a donation, appropriation to Seveds.
Doc?
Yes?
Doc, can I just make a point about that? I'm just looking at the email that you forwarded. She definitely says Wednesday, so.
The twenty-sixth.
I, I, yeah, I, my, my impression is she probably means Wednesday and just used the wrong date rather than having meant Thursday. But you, you should confirm that.
I would, I'm gonna confirm it when I, uh, you know, I'll send her a note and tell her that, yes, to learn more about the ARPA funding. All right, um, so Sevka would like to come and visit. I'm gonna suggest they come and talk about how they spent the money that we donated to them and how, how it enhanced Brookline. So I'm gonna suggest they come in October. October, okay. We, in October, because I think September's gonna be busy. Uh, also, the Wyndham Regional Municipal Planning Grants are available for the planning commission. I'm gonna pass that along to the planning commission. Um, there's also an emergency watershed protection program. I received some information on that. I have to review a little bit more detail, but there might be some funding on that.
You went past the full, or was I missed you?
But these are a couple of things that came since I moved the agenda, because I'm just, I'm just letting you know about them.
Okay.
All right, that's carpentry and timber. Okay, Carpentry and Timber, uh, sent me a quote for one day's work, which we approved in the last meeting. Um, the quote was for two thousand eight hundred dollars. I did write back to him in the car and said that we were in the impression the quote was going to be the same as last year, two thousand five hundred dollars. And he said, no problem. He, we sent the quote for two thousand five hundred dollars. He said going forward. Uh, his prices have gone up this year. It's twenty-eight hundred dollars for a full crew for the full day, but he's saying to, to save the town of three hundred dollars uh, in this particular time and I have that told here, uh, for process. Okay, um, planning commission organization, I already talked about this one, the annuals online. And I'm gonna ask, once I'm here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Gwen if she would consider working with the planning commission, going to some of their meetings, just to be a liaison. I'd do the same for the meeting house and Bruce is doing it for the town for that. Sandy, you've been involved in the round schoolhouse, so I'm gonna ask Gwen and, and David, you've been doing the grant work. So I'm gonna ask Gwen if she can help out or just attend some of the planning that she needs. Uh, again, very pleased that our emergency and special meetings last week resulted in the hiring of our, our road supervisor, uh, number one bills. We're very pleased in terms of all the residents here, that are here. And, uh, again, our, our motion that we had was to also get that, that would be helpful for you to move on. All right, um, I have listener positions. I have three interested residents who have sent me an email for the listeners. I contacted each of them saying that things are really a little bit busy with the floods and, and I apologized and they were certainly fine, holding off a little bit. I have to come in and talk to Helen about it, uh, and, and see how we can set this up. One of the applicants was actually an auditor in Weston and, uh, you know, he might be more interested in, in, I mean, he might be interested in something else besides the listeners here in town. So again, I'll talk to Helen, uh, about that and set up some kind of interview process.
Does he live outside of?
No, he lives in Brookline, he lives up, up the side of Archie Clark. Um, uh, his name is Stuart Duke. Not true, which I know it was, it was named, and then he started paying to the meeting house a couple of weeks ago and I met that person. So that was nice. Uh, Mark, as far as a handicap parking spaces at town hall, I didn't bring the booklet with me, but I don't think we need to all the lineage. Now, I work at several place stores and that, and they have a sign and a post in a close area to the ramp and I think that's all we're gonna need to choose, a sign and a post. We'll have to get special lines, just right here and just have one space dedicated. But also, we also should do one at the school as well. So I'll talk to you about that. I don't think we need to vote on the sign.
Yeah, we could, uh, I'll agree upon which time.
Yeah.
I'll agree upon which time and then where exactly place that.
We're going to have to consult the school.
Yeah, that's fine, but we'll, we'll work on that, we'll, we'll. All right. Handicap park in Town Hall, all right, next building commissioner report, Bruce Snow.
I'm going to disappoint you, sure.
Absolutely, thank you.
Building's done, it's been painted, the only thing that's left now here on in is maintenance. We'll be making every, excuse me, having on me if you want the fourteen thousand five hundred for our meeting on the first. So I suggested anybody's interested in taking a look at the bill that hasn't, do so. Stan has it with me, I've looked at it three times, Dot looked at it with me and I'm pleased, I don't know about her, so I'm happy with what they did. Mo called me up one day asking me about it, we had a great discussion and he, and he told me that for future, that he would, in the bill, which he did, he would tell the exact materials he used, he also gave me some stain as well. Again, with that stain as well. And going forward, I'm going to have a boiler room set up with a lot of information. Pictures of what happened before and after, maintenance schedule, the paint that was used, filters on and off. I went over this to Dot yesterday, and we're going to just make that boiler room a storage room, not be in the way of of vendors in order to serve our need because things get a little crowded out in the neighborhood. And that's basically it. If anybody would like to have any questions about the paperwork that you have to answer. Otherwise, you go over there, take a look at it, like I said, it's going to be approved on the first. And the only thing left now is maintenance.
All right, thank you very much, the building does some beautiful.
That's, thank you.
It's been a long hot shot.
Been a long haul, okay, we're moving along, we're going to be outside, no, maybe not. Highways and roads, every work goes supervisor, I had three things here. Number two was Marie Tattersalls, which you dealt with and the sand bed, you said we can do that in by September first. So it just helps a little bit review about what you're doing and then.
All right, so just to, back to Marie Tattersall and Mr. Tattersall. You know, as, as the road highway prepared guy, we generally don't do anything outside of our twenty-five foot right away from this yellow line, middle of the road out. If there's something that we could do on a ditch to help them, be glad to do that, but as far as us going behind the house, we're kind of stepping outside the highway department. But again, if there's something that we could do as the town to help them, I think Archie is the, is more fitting for the task of being an employee and an architect for Archie, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to speak that, that.
Right.
That by going beyond the right of way or any of our jurisdiction and being told through.
Well, that's one of the things I want to talk with Archie about, whether Marie hires him directly.
Yeah.
Or, or, or it's done as a town, town thing, so either way, I'm going to clarify that and speak with the Tattersalls and everybody be aware.
We did talk about, there's a major culvert going under the road, which we are in line to receive funding from the state for a box culvert, which was designed by a hydraulic study. But as we looked at the, the problem, that culvert really doesn't do anything for the Tattersalls, it's, it's the water getting to that point where it can cross under the town, it's grassy over the road.
Right, because originally we thought we have to look at that culvert maybe a couple of years down the line. This is a more readily built vault situation to excavate out the degree, so that it can flow.
Right, so, so, so once the actual problem is corrected, then the new culvert will be a bonus benefit for them. But first of all, there needs to be a new channel to keep the water from the resident.
Yeah.
And so, since our last meeting, I've been working pretty regular, working with the Clark business to repair our roads. Sometimes I'm working with them and sometimes if they have a spare machine, they've allowed me to utilize it to bring the materials to repair our, our ditches, fix the culverts that are flooded out, washed out or plucked. So I've been spending lots of time on the details that were caused by the flood. They, they've got the road passable. I'm working, finished up with one of the grants, our erosion grant that Jeff Nugent walked with me on and made plans for. That was the worst flooded section, so as they put it back, I gave them the details that I wanted to see that that, that fit the grant, so we should be ninety-nine percent finished up on a three-segment erosion grant. And this, this will, we will be receiving monies back for this as well as, it's an upgrade. And as I mentioned before, there's, there's one culvert to be replaced, which is on that order. But that'll be here before October first, hopefully can get that, so. I, I'm, this flood has actually put us behind schedule for general maintenance about a month, I'm going to say. So normally, by now, we're, we're putting finished gravel on our regular roads just to rebuild and replenish, which needs to be done every year, so that hasn't happened yet due to working on the flood roads. Not that it's not going to happen, it's just, it's been delayed.
Hasn't happened yet, yeah.
And I know, talking about some roads haven't seen the grader since spring. The other thing about using the grader is, I try to watch the weather forecast, if you scrape the road, it loosens the surface up. And then you shape it and the traffic will pack it down. But it's a little bit different than if it's set there for a long time and had light rains that condense everything. So I've kind of been a little bit leery about loosening the roads up due to, we had so much rain. And especially the hills, if you loosen it up and the rains come, there goes a lot of your gravel down the ditch, through the culvert, it's still building back, so.
Yeah.
I bet you're at that point. Yeah, but be careful tomorrow morning, the coal for fests.
Yeah, I, I had one about four inches of rain starting in there.
I thought we lost access.
We're not, we're not, it's two thousand bucks on the, on the afternoon.
So there's much grading that needs to be done, which I'm, I'm headed for. The, the excavator wheels that are asked permission to rent will be here on the twenty-third. I was told.
August?
Twenty-third of August.
Okay.
And I asked for one month and I said, if we, if we're in the middle of projects and at the end of that month it's available for a longer term, and she says, oh yeah, I think that's long what you want, so I just wanted to say that.
It's free, right?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I do not.
Wow.
So.
Good job.
The big issue was, I really wanted to rent the mower attachment to go on this to do mowing. The machine that had the mower was sold, we don't have more anymore, and we're not finding to get enough.
Sorry, I'm unable to hear, there's a lot of conversation.
He said he wasn't able to get the over the rail, wasn't able to get the mower.
Mower attachment attachment for the wheel excavator.
Yes, there were, there were several people talking at once, that was the problem.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
So we're not going to be able to get the mowing done?
Not for that machine. I don't know if we want to try and put it out to bid or it's the end of summer to rent a mower again. Sure, how you want to address that stuff.
Because I was sort of hoping to get the knot we banned in the baseball field, otherwise I don't like to wait till spring, but. All right, well, let's.
So, so maybe we could talk about it at the next meeting, I'll figure out.
Sure, it is on, again, the wheel excavator, purchase possibility is also up for September.
And we can talk about the mowing and whatever we can do to get that done.
Okay, thank you.
So, the next meeting is coming. I talked with our pre-service and if the rain is going to be torrential tomorrow, that was canceled for tomorrow, so. He asked my schedule, I told him my action schedule, if he could come and do it on a better day. So I'm just waiting to hear back what that date will be. But it was due for tomorrow. I think that's all I have here.
Quick question. Yes, sir. The date of October first comes up regarding work to be done, is it that it must be completed by October first or begun by October first?
It has, what that means is you cannot work in the water with permits. So anything that you're doing in running water has to end.
Has to stop, okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much, Mark.
And, and I'll, just one last thing, I just, I just want to thank the boards so much for all you've done for me. I appreciate everything, I know you guys spent extra hours working, I just, I do wish to thank you, I really appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
For your work.
I like, I like.
It'd be good.
Oh, and what were you?
Okay, all right, well, we're coming down to the.
Thank you for the floor.
Yes. Yes.
We'll start by the.
All right, so I'm going to quickly go through my communications, we already talked about the email from Marie and Chuck Tattersall during the flood, flooding. I did get a written complaint from Mark at Lerman of that noise on beautiful Sunday and I explained that logging and and working agricultural, things like that sort may make noise and, and there's nothing we can do about it. Tom, Tom Pavat and I had exchanged information about meeting with Daniel and we also entertained questions about quality of work down around school last night, there was an emails exchanged back before I had as well, or came in. Not much as far as, oh, one other email that just came in tonight. I'll read it to you. Three eighteen, my phone is eighteen. Hello, Dot, I am ready to inform you that I will not be running for reelection next year and if we could find someone who wanted to take up the town treasurer position now, then that would be great and I would step down. I took the position thinking I had time necessary to give the job, however, this is no longer the case. Might be helping trading the next treasurer, I'd be happy to do so. So that's Michael Masters, so again, Michael has not had enough time to do with real estate and the farming that he's doing, so besides the listers and planning and everybody else, we have other, other things to deal with. So I just wanted to share that with us, communications.
Is, question?
Give a second.
Does that mean at this point in time, appears, if I'm wrong, tell me, that Samara is really running a show and Michael, Mike Masters is kind of helping, is that the one period to speak?
I don't know how to answer that, I don't know. However, I discussed with Samara and she said that she would like time on September first to address the select board as to something she'd like to do in streamlining or end of the fiscal year that ended in July thirty-first.
Well, sure, exactly, I was just telling.
That's right.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I'm glad she's thinking on those lines.
Yeah.
Correct. All right, so now I'm going to do payrolls. A mark holder. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number twenty, twenty-two dash oh eight dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of two thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. May I have a second? Seconded by Stan Nova, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty, twenty-two dash oh eight dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one two thousand two hundred forty-seven thousand ninety-nine cents, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, don't you have?
What's the number again, please?
Two thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents.
Thank you.
That's the sign, that's the sign here, everybody. Okay, the accounts payable, payable, payable warrant has two parts to it this evening as the appropriations which were voted for by the town in March will be, are being sent out. But the first warrant, we like to say this, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the check warrant twenty, twenty-two dash oh seven dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And this, this is warrant part A for regular bills. And the amount of this warrant is twenty-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? I would like to make a note that the warrant includes the New Brook Fire Department budget that we appropriate to the fire department for their services to the town of Brookline. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving part A of the warrant, the regular bills and the fire department appropriation number twenty, twenty-two dash, twenty, twenty-two dash oh seven for twenty four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the payroll warrant part A has passed, I'm going to sign it, pass this part around. If somebody mind. Okay, this is part B of the check warrant report twenty, twenty-two dash oh seven, which are the appropriations only as were voted by the town on the town meeting day. This, this appropriation is dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one and the amount is eight thousand eight hundred and six dollars. May I have a second? Seconded by Stan, any discussion?
Yeah, actually, Dot, I think there's a mistake in the, in this warrant that I just noticed. The Seveds appropriation is listed as fifteen hundred dollars, it should be fifteen hundred and ninety dollars. That's what we voted on and the voters approved at town meeting. So that appropriation should be fifteen ninety and the total, bringing the total amount to eighty-eight ninety-six is what this warrant should be.
All right, thank you for noticing that, as you were saying, and I'm like, oh, yes, check this against this one. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the amended part B, accounts payable warrant for appropriations with the additional ninety dollars added to the Seveds appropriation, making it fifteen ninety. Signify, totaling eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so. Did you, okay?
Oh, sorry, I, I said aye. I thought I did, I meant to, sorry. I voted in favor of it.
All right, all right, so the motion passes as amended.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Uh, could you give me the details of this last one again to make sure I got it?
Okay, it's, the details are twenty-two dash oh seven, part B appropriations only, edited, or amended with a ninety-dollar increase in the appropriation for Seveds, S-E-B-E-D-S. So the total appropriation amount should read eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars as amended. Right, you voted on, everybody, yes, you have, so I'll just sign that.
Thank you, I did get it, thanks.
Okay, perfect. All right, setting the agenda for the next meeting on September first. We will talk about the wheel excavator, we'll mention of the planning commission. We will update information learned about ARCA funding. We will return to the Tattersall ditch. I'll call it Tattersall ditching. We'll talk about the possibility of mowing and machines. Around schoolhouse versus the historical society appointments. And any other items that come up before then?
We'll open sand bids, presumably, hopefully.
Oh, thank you. Yes, sir. Open the sand.
Hopefully we'll get at least, hopefully we'll get at least one bid and open it.
Okay, sand bids, all right. Got you with something?
Oh, yeah, I would like to at some point start looking for an electrician to hook up our generator.
Okay, we can get some estimates, but first one you can reach out to is Dom Pierce. Be one of the ones you can look to, because they have all the paperwork on file.
Right, okay, yes, well.
And, and then we advertise with some. All right, so we'll talk to them.
Yeah, okay. No, I just, you know, I want to forget about this. I know it hasn't been, you know, on our radar screen, but some point we probably will need to have it. But there's gotta be some, some, external wiring that has to be done.
Exactly. There is another firm that I have hooked mine up for me at my house. If you'd like the name, I can give it to you now or later. Lawrence and Wober, Wober and Lawrence in Bellas Falls.
Well, I think we should probably put it out this bid.
It's about twelve hundred dollars.
No, well.
That leading, leading more.
Oh, I don't know.
Mine was, mine one cost me six hundred dollars.
What cost that twelve? Wow.
Yeah, part of it is gonna depend on what is available in the panel, the electrical panel that we have.
Right.
That's a lot of the cost potentially is an, an expanded panel or a new panel. I had to pay more, like you, Dot, because I had to get my panel replaced. So it, that depends. Well, no, literally just for more space. Literally for more space and slots in the panel, so, yeah, right.
All right, so electric, the electrician for the generator, open the sand bids, the mowing machine, round schoolhouse, historical society, Tattersall ditching, ARCA, planning commission, wheel excavator, anything else that may come before this work. Anything else to think of? Not some other time.
Yeah, right.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the season's meeting, and have a second.
So moved.
So removed by Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourned the season's meetings to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.